This is an application and appeal in the matter of the claim on the application of B C and Surrey County Council.
Yes.
Um, good morning. May it please your lordships appear on behalf of the appellant, Surrey County Council in this matter. Miss Liu appears for B C and she is leading today, Mr. Clark. Um, there is an anonymity order made in relation to B C.
Yep.
Um, my lord, uh, there is an application to start off with, but I don't think it need trouble you at this point.
Well, uh, does that concern the unagreed bundle?
The unagreed bundle, yes.
Well, um, can we just deal with that on the basis that, um, if anybody wants to show us anything in that, we'll consider that to be an essay. And if there's a continues to be a row about it, we'll deal with it in our judgments. But, um, we don't want to spend time doing that now.
My lord, you echo exactly what Miss Liu and I had been discussing before we came in.
Right. Have you, the two of you spoken about the timetable?
We have.
Good, that's very helpful.
We have two days and appeal.
You have two days, you're not obliged to use two days if you decide that you don't need them. But, but we would much rather, if you, if you're going to be the bulk of the two days, that's fine. We, we would like to know what the rough timetable is, please.
Roughly speaking, um, we propose that I get the bulk of today, whereas Miss Liu gets about an hour at the end of the day.
Okay, well then.
Uh, she then follows on tomorrow morning and possibly a little bit into the afternoon, tomorrow afternoon. Then I reply on, um, those grounds that I have got a right of reply on. And then she replies on B C's grounds on the cross appeal.
Okay, well, um, um, fine, but I should think therefore that you would really need to be aiming to have finished your two sets of submissions by, uh, 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 not later than lunchtime tomorrow, so that tomorrow afternoon are the replies.
I will, um, hopefully not take all of today, or as much of today as we'd anticipated.
No.
Gone through things a little bit more. So I certainly don't propose to linger too much.
Okay.
Um, my, my lords should have, in terms of housekeeping, call supplementary bundles as well as the unused, unused bundles. Um, it is, sorry, the unagreed bundle. It is not that there's a row about the contents of those, I simply don't think that they are, are necessary for your lordship's determinations. You should have a supplementary skeleton argument as well as the original skeleton argument on each side.
We've got two replacements, two skeletons for each, replacement.
Yes.
A replacement skeleton from each other and a replacement supplemental skeleton.
Yes.
Is there a fifth skeleton that we ought to have in mind, or does they all get absorbed into those four?
I think you've got enough there.
You certainly have enough.
I was gonna say, we're not gonna argue about that. Um, there was something, you provided a response to the cross appeal, but we've rather assumed that that's got subsumed into one or other of the skeletons.
It has, it's gone into my replacement skeleton.
Right, so my lord is right that it's four.
And my learned friend has also provided a schedule of references which your lordship.
Yep, we have that.
Of assistance and of course, uh, the agreed bundle of authorities.
And the schedule of references is needed because amongst other things, the chronology doesn't refer to the right pages. So the, the chronology in the call bundle, um, for example, if you go to, um, page 169 of the call bundle, chronology at the top of the page, the episode closure record is said to be supplemental bundle 103. But if you go to that, it is a detention form and the disclosure record is page, closure record, sorry, is page 76.
My lord, perhaps I could assist. Um, the chronology, um, refers to the High Court bundle.
Yes, we're now in the court of appeal.
Yes, of course, and I don't think, I don't believe it was updated when Surrey filed its appeal. Um, but we have taken the liberty of putting in all the references.
Yes.
That would assist your lordships and ladyship. We've put all the reference, uh, we've amended the references. Um, and we can hand up that chronology if that is of any use.
Oh, I thought that was what your, um,
Uh, we, we.
Schedule of references.
The schedule is by reference to the judgment. Um, but when I was preparing as well, I was trying to figure out where the documents are in the chronology.
Well, I, let, let, at the moment.
I don't want to inundate you, but.
No, um, uh, at the moment, let's leave it with the, your cross-reference of the shed, of the documents in the judge's judgment and then we'll see how we go. But I, I, um, um, just demonstrating that, um, I, I had worked out for myself that the cross-references were wrong for the bundles that we have. So I think I can say we've read the skeletons, we've read some of the backup documents and we've read some of, certainly speaking for myself, some, but by no means all of the law.
Can I just check, uh, perhaps my thing? I haven't seen the schedule of references. Did it come in separately?
Well, I'll get my clerk to fish it off the, um, digital file. Did it came in separately, did it by email?
It came in separately, um, and by email. Um, we could email it to your.
It'll be, it'll be on our shared drive somewhere.
It'll be in the digital vault, it just needs somebody to fish it out.
It'll be in the shared drive, I'll find it. Right.
Um, my lords, there are effectively two discrete parts to this appeal. First, dealing with the procedural matter, the question of delay in bringing the claim for judicial review. And the second, the more substantive issue as to the duties owed by Surrey to B C. Um, and the question of delay, uh, is the one that I propose to deal with first. Um. My lords, these relate to grounds one and two, uh, for which permission was granted. The claimant's claim arose out of events in September to October 2019. Those events, he says, gave rise to a duty under section 20 of the Children Act. And that was a complete, um, a set of events at that time. It is not in dispute that he dropped out of contact with Surrey after basically, uh, October 2019. And it was not until the ninth of August 2022 that he launched a claim for judicial review. In my submission, that was manifestly out of time.
What was the last contact he had with, uh, would it be children's services or children and young people's services? You said he dropped out of, you, he lost contact with, was your phrase or something like that?
He dropped out of contact. He didn't come back to Surrey for any further assistance after October 2019. I will come back to the chronology of events later in relation to the substantive part of the case. But he is someone who had been known to Surrey, part of a family that had been known to Surrey.
Yeah.
From 2003 onwards, bumping along on.
He'd been a child in need at some point, I think.
No, he'd been in, given assistance.
I know, that's right, early help.
Trying to avoid getting into the child in need stage of things. And successfully so, we say, throughout, and of course, uh, that is the dispute, um, to, between us.
Without taking up, interrupt, I will interrupt, I promise to interrupt, but he was, you, it was accepted below that he was a child in need at the relevant time.
There's an issue about disability. He had at one stage when he was eight or nine, a benign brain tumour. And the removal of that may have left him with residual effects that amount to a disability. If he has a disability, he is ipso facto a child in need.
I'm sorry, my question was, I, I, I thought it was agreed between parties that he was a child in need. Have I got that wrong?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Other than the question of disability, which would, if, if he were disabled, then he would qualify.
All right.
It was not until the 12th of August 2021 that B C got back in touch with Surrey. And that is the, um, letter, the 12th of August 21, which is at supplementary bundle, page 112. It is letter from Lawstop, dated the 12th of August 2021. And it is addressed, you see, at, uh, page, uh, 112 to care leaver services, Renee Mead Social Services. Um, Renee Mead Borough Council is in fact the local housing authority, but not the social services authority, which is Surrey. Over the page, you will see the details of the matters being challenged. Your authority's failure to consider the exercise of its discretion to treat B C as a former relevant child upon him turning 18. Um, the failure to recognise him as a former relevant child and so on. And you will also see, uh, that at this point, he says that he was, uh, a combination of street homeless and sofa surfing for two to three years since he was 16 years old. Um, I don't think that is borne out on the face of the documents that we have done before us. At the top of page 114, the claimant instructs that he was in care with Renee Mead Social Services, uh, which again, social, social services were not Renee Mead's, uh, prior, um, purely, it was Surrey's.
And he wasn't ever in care of any?
He wasn't ever in care. Um, at the third paragraph of, uh, sorry, the second paragraph, the claimant instructs that he went to Social Services in Adleston to complete a homelessness application. Well, of course, you don't go to Social Services to complete a homeless application, you go to housing. And Adleston is the, um, office of Renee Mead Borough Council, the local housing authority. Uh, the claimant advises that when he was 16, he was arguing with his mum and his dad was ill. It was therefore not an option for him to return home. He was subsequently sofa surfing for a year, he says. Uh, and then the medical history, we've got the reference, the brain tumour that I've just alluded to. And, um, he says that he needs further support with managing his finances and housing. He advises that he gets paid once a month, so on and so forth. And they raise the following grounds. First of all, the failure to provide former care leaver status under section 23, C A of the Children Act 1989, on the fact the claimant was accommodated by Renee Mead Social Services. At that point, at the age of 16, and in fact, he couldn't return to his parents, the claimant was therefore an eligible child. And, um, at the next page, the third paragraph down says the claimant fulfilled the criteria set out in G and Sillip, which we will have to look at later on. Um, failure to provide other assistance is the next part of that letter and failure to provide an assessment of needs and pathway plan. And over the page, page 117, failure to act as a responsible corporate parent, failure in its duty to refer between departments and utilise a general protocol. And over the page at 118, reducing health and social equalities, inequalities, the outcomes for care leavers are notoriously poor. Not quite sure what relevance this has to the, uh, case actually advanced by the claimants in the end. So the details of the action the defendant was expected to take, I assume. Please confirm that the council accepts that the claimant has former care leaver status, undertaken assessment of needs, uh, um, and ensured joint protocols are acted upon. And then over the page, details of information sought, the claimant's social file and housing file. And again, housing is relevant to, uh, Renee Mead, claimant's needs assessment and pathway plan, tenancy agreement. Not quite sure again what, what is that one, and the local authority for care leavers. Now, Renee Mead could have just said, this is nothing to do with those go away, but instead they passed it on to Surrey. And, uh, at page 120, Surrey very properly said, can you confirm who the proposed defendant really is? If Surrey County Council's proposed defendant, is your case, your client also being recognised by S C C as a former relevant child? If so, from what date would you say that B C was looked after by Surrey County Council? And the response to that comes over the page 121. Uh, Surrey County Council is the proposed defendant and should have been addressed in the letter. I apologise for this mistake and have corrected the parties in the letter before action attached. We believe this duty is from when the claimant was 16 in 2017 stroke 18. And we look forward to receiving a substantive response in due course. It is therefore clear in my submission that at that point, Lawstop were clear that they had, um, a case against Surrey County Council dating back to the time when the claimant was 16. Surrey respond, uh, page 122 on the 23rd of August. And at page 123, they give some details as to the intervention that Surrey had with the, uh, claimant over the period, uh, about 2017 through to 2019. They note at the top of page 124, from having reviewed its files, S C C is clear in its understanding that B C was not homeless from the period September 19 to December 2019. The invitation was always open for the claimant to return to his family home or in the alternative to make use of the spare family caravan. The claimant was therefore not accommodated by S C C, or Renee Mead B C, at any point, and was therefore not an eligible child. S C C did acknowledge at the time that he had some support needs which it endeavoured to assist with, including reparation of his family relationship and his search for employment. And the alleged failures are denied in full. Um, down at the bottom of page 124, um, Surrey point out that the request for the housing file, as one for Renee Mead, not Surrey, but also invite him to make a former subject access request for disclosure of his social services file. And because he had never been, uh, in care, no care leaver needs assessment of pathway plan had been completed. No tenancy agreement is available. At that stage, the battle lines were clearly drawn and it is clear again that Lawstop had all the information relevant to the claim that B C would eventually lodge. However, they did not act at that time. What they did was send a second letter, ninth, well, third, because the first one was replaced, uh, ninth of September 2021 on page 126. They set out more details about the facts and make further submissions. Responding quite completely to Surrey's, uh, response to their initial letter before action. And at page 134, details of the action the defendant is expected to take. We renew our request that the defendant exercise the discretion and treat the claimant as a former relevant child. Had the council undertaken a child in needs assessment when you approached them? It is likely that the result of the assessment would have indicated he was a child in need. Uh, and then provide the claimant with the needs assessment and so on. And provide the further details and evidence requested in this document, but I don't think that there is any request within that document. Again, at this point, it has to be said, everything was there for a claim to be lodged.
Yep.
Surrey respond on 135 and confirm the position. That's the 16th of September. Lawstop then take another few weeks to respond to that, 11th of October 2021. In that letter, at page 138, in the middle of the page, Lawstop say that they are convinced that their client has a strong claim for judicial review in this matter, by your own admissions, it says.
Okay, well, there are further exchanges of correspondence. Is there anything in particular that we need to look at? I mean, there's, there's correspondence about the claim.
There is. Uh, the letter of the 11th of October 2021, uh, on 137 gives Surrey a final opportunity before proceedings are issued. But then just nothing happens, Lawstop.
Well, we know that nothing happens till August 22. So is there any other bit of this correspondence that, that you want to show us?
Just to, uh, make the point that on the 27th of May 2022, which is page 150, Lawstop state that they are instructed to issue proceedings without further notice. And yet it took a further 10 and a half weeks for him to actually issue proceedings, which cannot, in my submission, be described as prompt. Despite that, the learned judge gave the claimant permission to bring the claim. And his, uh, judgment on that in the call bundle.
Yep. Page 155.
First of all, doesn't deal with the question of delay until the very end of the judgment. I asked him to deal with it as a preliminary, that he acceded to Miss Liu's, uh, submission, that it should be dealt with, uh, at the end. And first of all, he says that this is something that is excused by, um, this, uh, the, it's a page, uh, paragraph 101, page 158. Lawstop encountered significant difficulties in obtaining disclosure of contemporaneous documents, um, evidencing the internal actions and decisions taken by S C C, which I consider excuse any delay in B C bringing proceedings. Um, Surrey described as unhelpfully there, refused to provide disclosure in pre-action correspondence, insisting that B C make a subject access request. A series of time-consuming complaints had to be made to obtain disclosure through the SAR and the D P A. See the witness statement, uh, relied upon by the claimant as he then wrote. But my lords, in my submission, that does not amount to any reason for delaying bringing proceedings. First of all, the starting point is when the cause of action, cause of action arose, and that was quite clearly October 2019. There was at that time a complete cause of action because at that stage, Lawstop say, had a child in need assessment been done, it would have led to the conclusion that, um, B C was in need and he would have been provided with accommodation there and then. And so it's a complete cause of action at that point. And so the claim should have been brought by the end of that year, 2019. The judge found that it was a continuing state of affairs. But rather than a continuing state of affairs, this is a question of the after-effects of the state of affairs that had coalesced at that time in 2019.
Sorry, say that again.
Rather than a, uh, uh, a continuing state of affairs.
Yep.
What we're dealing with was the after-effects of Surrey's failure, as alleged at that time. So because Surrey had, on his case, failed to appreciate that he was a child in need, he did not have, when he returned in 2021, 2022, the benefits that would flow from that, rather than that being a complete, uh, a continuing state of affairs.
I mean, normally in J R cases where delay arises, um, you work out when the cause of action accrued, effectively, when the decision was taken or whatever it was. Then you, you add on the three months and then if the claim was brought after that, you see whether there was an entitlement to an extension. The judge didn't do that because the judge doesn't actually identify when the three months was up. But if, for these purposes, let's assume you're right and it's the end of 2019. So then you, uh, in terms of the extension that would then be needed, um, you get up to the point where the correspondence starts, which you've shown us, which is August 2021. And then the question of whether there was justification from August 2021 for another year to 2022. That would be the logical approach to delay and extensions.
My lord, yes, except that even within the three-month period, it can still be found that you didn't act promptly.
Yeah, but that's not your case.
That, I don't think that's possible.
And, and that would be pretty difficult in circumstances where the claim is that the council didn't, um, um, face up to, it is said, their, uh, legal obligations. So I think we can take it that, um, 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 it's the end of the year at the earliest, subject to what Miss Liu might say. Um, and, and then it seems to me that that's how the period then falls out.
So the grounds for the claim first arose in October 2019. Three months added on to that gives you more or less, say, December 2019, January 2020. Um, so that is, uh, the claim form must be filed at any event, in any event, not later than three months after the grounds to make the claim first arose. But it must also be promptly throughout the whole of the period, so starting from when the grounds to make the claim first arose going onwards.
Assuming there is a claim, which of course you ultimately say there isn't.
Yep.
What, what precisely do you say was the point at which the claim arose and why?
I, the, the earliest it could be said to arise is the 13th of September 2019. Because that's the date he seeks homelessness assistance from Renee Mead Council. Of course, Surrey didn't know about that at that time, but it was passed on to them. So that's when, that's when they are.
Yes. I actually asked what your position was because your case is that there wasn't a duty at that. There was, the claim did not arise at the 13th. You said it rose in October, uh, a minute or so ago. And I was just wondering how, why you say that.
One particular date, 16th of October 2019, is the date that has been highlighted by the judge as the date when Surrey, um, arranged accommodation for him.
Yes. Is that the date on which the claim arose, if it arose at all?
I'm trying not to plead a case against myself at this point, but certainly by that.
No, but you have to have a case, even if it's in the alternative, as to when you say the case arose. Because although you perfectly properly raised delay, as you rightly say, the judge didn't deal with it first, which is surprising. And he doesn't deal with it on the basis that the claim arose at X date, um, which is also surprising. So that's hence my lord's question. Um, we'll need to know from both of you what your cases are in circumstances where there, there's a gap in the judgment.
Isn't, isn't your ca, your case, your case, the case must be, isn't it? There was a failure by the local authority. This is a, this is a not making a decision case rather than a decision case.
Yes.
There was a failure to make a decision by the local authority within a reasonable time of it being put on notice by Renee Mead that a child was claiming to be in need of accommodation. The judge, I think, put that towards the 18th of September, something like that. Um, and then what the judge did with it was say, because it was a failure case, there was a continuing failure effectively, either to take the decision or to provide the care. And I think your point is that that's a wrong characterisation, that this is a point in time failure with ongoing consequences.
Yes, I would say that there was a decision on the 20th of September that he was not a child in need.
Not a child, yeah.
So I'm, I'm hitting my colours to the left on the basis of that.
I was just, you said October, and that's why I intervene when I do.
October could be argued as well. Uh, 16th of October could be argued because the judge has to say identified that, but.
But if my lady is right, it is, my lady's always right, but if she's right in saying what your case is, which is that it was a duty, it's a failure. Although, no, not your case.
No, it's not, no, you actually have a positive case. It's a positive case. And no, I've misunderstood that. That you say a decision was made on the 20th of September 2019 that he was not a child in need.
Yes.
But that's, that's the point, that's the date.
I, I would accept that there were subsequent dates when Surrey could have. I would accept that there were subsequent dates when Surrey could have taken a contrary decision, but it's not a case where Surrey just left things drift and.
No, but you don't, J R doesn't start running simply because somebody could have taken a different decision at a later date. That maybe it has to be looked at, maybe a ground for an extension, but it's not when the original claim arises.
There was a.
Anyway, so you say 20th of September, pinning your colours to the marks.
Yes.
Right. And that's when the date, so we're looking at it now, let's back to front, but you've started with the delay point.
Yes.
And we have to know when the time starts, don't we, when the time on your case starts to run, and your case is it starts on the 20th, my lord is now, I believe, the delay point on the 20th of September, not October, is that right?
I think if a claim had been lodged by January 2020, I wouldn't have been making a delay point at that point. But we'd have been in a very different situation then. We would have been in a situation where, first of all, we had people around who knew what was going on. By the time we got to court, we'd lost the people who were sort of primarily concerned. We were just going on the record at that stage. So there was prejudice to Surrey in the claim being so delayed. So the question, first of all, was it brought promptly? The judge didn't ask that question at all. And the question after that was, was it brought, should there have been an extension of time? And the only reason why the judge found that there should have been an extension was because Surrey gave disclosure with some minor redactions.
Well, that's not quite right, is it? I mean, I understand the point, this might say was not very clear, but there appears to be two reasons for an extension. One, that in some way, this is an ongoing breach. And then secondly, the redactions point. So take them in whichever order you like, but I think that that was the way the judge approached it. He starts, and most of his judgment on this point is about ongoing breach.
I've made the point that by, first of all, the 20th of September, there was a clear decision, and B C was aware of that because he wasn't taken into care. He was aware that Surrey were offering him targeted youth support, and he agreed to that, as did his parents. So there was, first of all, of course, you can be, time can run, even if you are not aware of the decision having been taken. And time can run even if.
Yes, well, we know that, but that's usually or can be a good ground for an extension.
Yes.
So that brings us back. But what about this question of continuing breach?
The way it's put by the claimant in his grounds of claim is as a complete breach, not as an ongoing claim, not as an ongoing state of affairs, a continuing state of affairs. You have the. Claim form. Page 329 in the big law bundle.
The statement of facts and grounds, which runs to 40 pages. Have that. Which bit of the 40 pages are we looking at?
To the end of that, I think. Sorry, no, we'll go back to. If we go to page 329, we see the four grounds that are identified. And it's put in terms of one-off events, as soon as the section 20 duty arose. The actions taken by the defendant amounted to providing with the claimant with accommodation, that is to say, what happened in October. And the defendant should exercise its discretion as a forward-looking matter, but it is ground for in the alternative, he was privately fostered for at least 28 days. That one actually falls away because the date, the claimant's actual date of birth means that he had come to be subject to a private fostered agreement at the date in question. These are one-off events, the section 20 duty arose. That is a complete cause of action at that point. And so that is why I say there is not a continuing state of affairs kind of. Judicial review deals with decisions, events that lead to a claim. This is a claim because the section 28 duty arose, he became a looked-after child, it is clarified as a one-off event in those circumstances. And for those reasons, although there were consequences from that decision, or the decision not to provide him with assistance at that time, it was not an ongoing decision-making process. Surrey had stopped making decisions in relation to B C in October when he dropped out of contact. It wasn't a question of today we're going to take this decision, tomorrow we'll take a different decision. It's a question of what happened in September through to October 2019 that gave rise to the way that the claimant formulated his claim, the way it was formulated in the letters before action as well, all talking about a one-off event, trying to evade the fact that it was out of time. The claimant submitted, and submitted successfully for this judge, that it was an ongoing issue, but in fact, properly analysed, it is simply what happened back at that date, September, October 2019. And it's similar to, say, a planning appeal where the Secretary of State refuses permission for planning to go ahead. So there's an ongoing state of affairs in that the buildings aren't going up, or buildings are going up if permission is granted. But that doesn't make time continue to run for the purposes of judicial review. There were huge periods of delay. The claimant did not act in any way promptly. He had no excuse for that failure to act, particularly once he had engaged the services of Lawstop. And the judge wrongly fails to ask the question at the right time, should have asked it at the outset, rather than letting perhaps the tail wag the dog, deciding that the claim should succeed, so he granted permission. And to blame Surrey for the delay is entirely in my submission wrong because Surrey had provided disclosure, they had provided disclosure which was redacted. Most of the redactions are maintained because they are there to protect B C's siblings. They refer to personal data relating to somebody else. And there were a few things like personal telephone numbers redacted. There were some where Surrey subsequently agreed to unredact, that they had already lodged the claim by that time.
Well, I was going to say that the unredacted documents are irrelevant to the critical path of the delay, because the unredacted documents were only provided after the claim had started. So it couldn't be said that the unredacted documents were required before the claim could be started, because the claim could be started before they were provided.
Exactly, sir. Disclosure is not a really essential part of any judicial review claim in the way that it is in civil proceedings, generally speaking. C P R 53.1 doesn't apply to judicial review claims. So it has, the judge's decision on that has elevated disclosure to an impermissible point of providing an excuse for delay, where that is putting the cart before the horse. Disclosure usually comes after events in any event. So.
And you say there is, can I just track through? You say the disclosure really doesn't help on the critical path, because the critical path was he knew on the 20th of September at the latest, 2019, the local authority had refused to provide him with accommodation.
Um, yes.
And that's really, that's really all he needed to know, I mean, is either right or wrong?
Yes. He knew he wasn't being treated as a child in need, and he knew that his family and he were being still part of Surrey's sort of workload, if you like, but not as a child in need. He was being provided with targeted youth support, consented to that, as did his parents. And clearly by August 2021, he'd given instruction to Lawstop. Lawstop had formulated a letter before action, rather badly to start off with, but by the time we got to at least October 2021, they had the full picture there, giving Surrey a final opportunity, but then they don't do anything. It is inexcusable delay, certainly from that point onwards, and in my submission, the judge was wrong to grant permission for this claim to proceed. It was a very stale claim. My lady Fenn's submission on this is that there is no right of appeal to this court against the grant of permission to seek judicial review. She points out that permission once granted cannot be set aside, and I certainly agree with that. Obviously, this was slightly different. It wasn't a case where we have got a hearing to grant permission or permission being granted on the papers with a subsequent substantive hearing. This was a case where I had a rolled-up hearing. But nonetheless, had permission been granted at an earlier hearing, I quite agree that I would not have been able to apply to the judge here substantive matter to set aside that grant of permission. I would still have been able to, and did, rely on delay as a reason to refuse relief, and I submitted that to the judge again without any success. But my lady Fenn says the Court of Appeal has no power to review that. And I have seen nothing in her skeleton argument that supports that contention. Certainly, she has cited cases where the Court of Appeal has engaged in a review of the decision of the lower court. One of those is Lichfield is an example of that. And you also have, I don't know whether it's pronounced Gerber or Gerber, I'm going to say Gerber and Wiltshire, which was cited by Lord Justice Lewison when he granted permission to appeal on this ground. And he said, it may be that Gerber and Wiltshire was wrongly decided. And he then went on to say, although the judge may have been entitled to hold that the delay until 12th of August 2021, the date of the first letter before action, was adequately explained, the argument, the delay thereafter was not properly explained as a real prospect of success. So my starting point on this is that a party aggrieved by a decision of the judge should have a right of appeal to a higher court.
Section 16, is it? Where do you start? Where do you draw that principle from?
Well, I draw it from basic principles of justice and.
Well, you might, you both might want to look at section 16 of the Senior Courts Act 1981, which provides any party with the right to appeal against an order made by the High Court. So I think that may be the.
That was the point I was referring to.
I think that may be the starting.
The brother court started in Gerber, certainly, wasn't it?
My lady Fenn submits that. That, I think her argument must be that section 16 does not extend to revisiting the question of the grant of permission. But Gerber was one example, Lichfield was another example of that being done.
And whilst we're about it, and don't worry about it now, because obviously on this point, you've got a right of reply, because this is a point taken by the respondent, but there's a case called M D Afghanistan, 2012, one Weekly Law Report 2422, in which Lord Justice Stanley Burton deals with this point and says the real question is not whether the Court of Appeal had jurisdiction to consider the appeal against refusal of permission to apply for judicial review, but whether and if so, how it should have exercised its jurisdiction.
I'm very grateful.
So, but yeah, that, as I say, 2012, one W L R 2422, and section 16 of this Senior Courts Act, both seem to us to be potentially relevant to this issue. Anyway, you say there's a right to appeal, you say that there are cases, including Lichfield and Gerber, where this court has dealt with appeals on this point.
My lord, yes. And I don't think I have anything more to say on this. My submission is that relief should have been refused because the delay was so long, so unexcused, and so contrary to the good administration of justice as well. It was a case where the claim was long out of time, and Surrey had prejudice because memories had faded, staff members had moved on, and that was not taken into consideration by the learn of judge at all. This is a case where he erred in law, and I would ask that this appeal be granted on those grounds.
Because if you're right about that, that's the end of it.
It is.
If we get to the position of saying that he was wrong on a continuing breach, but the right analysis is whether he should have extended time, do you say that the decision by a judge whether to extend time is a decision in discretion? So you're looking at whether there's an error of law in terms of what went into the discretionary exercise? In which case, I think your submission just now was that there was a failure to take account of prejudice, and that was a material error in the exercise of discretion?
He didn't, in my submission, exercise a discretion. He found that it was in time.
Continuing care, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Because he found, I mean, as my lord said, there were two things that he found. One was that this was a continuing breach, so he didn't need to look at extension of time. But he also seems to have suggested that in any event, there was a reason, a good reason to extend time because he took failures of disclosure against your client. Your submission to us has been that the continuing breach analysis is incorrect as a matter of law. This was a breach once and once only in September, possibly October 2019, and you should have looked at it on that basis, in which case the analysis must be whether you could extend time up to the date of issue. And I suppose on one view, the judge did that in the alternative by saying that on balance, he thought there should be an extension of time because of disclosure failures. But my question to you, sorry, it's a long prelude, my question to you is, is the decision by a judge to extend time a decision in discretion?
Generally speaking, yes.
So what we, if we get to that point, what we're looking to see is whether he put all the right factors into his discretion or not.
Indeed, yes.
And you'd say he didn't.
He put one of the wrong factors in, which is the question of redactions. He put, he failed to take consideration of the fact that the correspondence made it clear that they had already identified the cause of action, and he failed to take into consideration the impact on Surrey as well. I might say that he gave too much weight to the fact that B C had a chaotic lifestyle after the incidents in question. That should not of itself excuse delay. I don't think I could say, go so far as to say that if that was the sole basis of the exercise of his discretion, that would be appealable. But put in everything else in, I would submit that he erred in law, he started from the wrong point, he didn't address himself to the right question, and he took into consideration things that he shouldn't have taken into consideration.
Great. So that's grounds one and two.
It is.
There we are, we're rattling along, less than an hour, and we've dealt with the first two grounds.
Those are the easy ones.
Don't say that, those are the ones that, you know, those are the ones that piqued my interest. The, you've got to make the other ones interesting. So that's your task, Miss Rowland, Miss Liu. Yes. So where do we go now?
Well, we now go into the very interesting question of the intersection between housing and. of the intersection between housing and children care for someone who is, I heard the phrase the other day, an emerging adult, someone who is on the verge of adulthood. And of course, when you get to 16, 17, 18, it's not as if somebody switches you on at being an adult when you turn to your 18th birthday. People mature in different ways and at different rates.
In the criminal cases with which my lady and I are familiar, we traditionally say it's not a cliff edge.
We do.
Yes, I deal with age assessment cases quite a lot where people say, well, he likes childish things and therefore he must be a child. And then you look at somebody like Boris Johnson dangling off a wire with a little flag going.
Don't attempt to make any political comments. I was in the Fanninor field where I'm most familiar. Equally, there is a recognition that children just don't drop off, young people don't drop off. The Parliament has made a series of amendments to the Children Act over the years, which is why we have all these section 22, Cs etc. added to reflect ongoing needs of young people and local authority obligations in appropriate cases.
In appropriate cases, indeed. But the starting point for my submissions is that people don't come in boxes when you can't stick a convenient label on people. People have different needs, people react in different ways to different circumstances and people have different backgrounds and decisions have to be made in accordance with the person, not a tick box approach of their age or their particular circumstances. That applies to homelessness. It also applies to assistance that can be given to children under the Children Act. The starting point in this case was BC applying to Runnymede Borough Council for homelessness assistance. He was at that stage 17, close to his 18th birthday. And at that stage, of course, some people might be quite juvenile. Some people might be, they might be parents in their own right. They might be married, they might be settled in a good job and starting out in life in a very positive and mature way. And it is for the local authority to make the kind of evaluative judgment that Lady Hale mentioned in G and Southwark about the needs of that young person, that emerging adult, as I say, I heard the phrase the other day and it very much appealed to me as being an appropriate way of talking about someone who is 17 going on 18. So the, there is an overlap in many ways between someone who's 17, 18, who applies as homeless and who wants to be accommodated by the local authority on that basis and someone who needs accommodation as a child because they are a child in need. So they might fall under one hat of a local authority or another. If it's a unitary authority, it gets slightly less complicated because the same authority might be providing housing as a local housing authority as is the same authority as being children's services. But in this case, as I've already noted, we've got a unitary authority here. We've got Surrey County Council providing children's services and Runnymede Borough Council providing homelessness assistance. Now, applying as homeless is not simply a route to alleviate being street homeless. You can be homeless whilst having accommodation and being accepted as homeless gives you reasonable preference when it comes to allocation of social housing on the local authority's waiting list on the register. So part six and part seven of the Housing Act 1996 give you a boost up when you are seen as homeless. There's an overlap between priority for housing in terms of someone who is 17 or 18, given priority need. And there is a question of which authority should be taking the lead? And that's been explored in the case law that we can look at now over the last few years. And you have before you in Ian Croyden at, sorry, I'm not going to go there first. I'm going to go to... I'm going to start off with the most recent case and the one that starts off in my supplementary skeleton arguments because I think that sums things up nicely. And that is DF in Essex, which is a tab 18 in the bundle of authorities. And it's at page 614 of the electronic bundle.
The pearls of wisdom of my lord.
Sorry.
Is that the pearls of wisdom of my lord, the justice maker?
Well, yeah. DFF, DF or TW?
TW is my lord.
TW is...
Yes.
What my lady is kindly referring to, pearls of wisdom. But DF is not me.
Well, DF, indeed, it's got very good words of wisdom nonetheless.
DF is real pearls of wisdom because it's the vice president.
So are we going, which one are we going to?
DF, please. The reason I'm going here first is that it does sum up where we've got to in the previous case law.
DF is more about the overlap, isn't it?
Yes.
TW isn't so much about the overlap.
No, TW is about the high burden that the appellant, that the claimant has to discharge if they're going to displace the local authority's assessment, evaluative assessment.
The moment you're concentrating on this interplay between homelessness and care.
At this point, yes.
Right.
So DF, they were both about Essex and so I'll try and remember which initials it is. DF was a young woman who had had a chaotic childhood, it says in paragraph two. And she had moved into her mother's flat and her mother then sadly died, leaving the claimant at that point, aged 17, alone in the flat, although she had some support from other family and friends. And it was Colchester Borough Council's accommodation managed by Colchester Borough Homes. They said she could not succeed to the tenancy, that she had no right to remain there. But as a concession to her and in order to give her support and out of concern for her welfare, it says, they decided to give her a tenancy of suitable alternative accommodation. They were going to wait, however, until she actually turned 18 so she could take a legal tenancy of the property. A child under 18 can't have a tenancy. And they would not evict her from her mother's flat at that time. So by the time she turned 18, she accepted an offer of a tenancy of another flat and moved in. She then brought a claim against Essex, saying that they should have treated her, similar to this case, as a looked after child at that time because she was in need of accommodation. At paragraphs 10 and onwards, we have the statutory provisions set out and the accommodation duty under section 20 with which we are concerned here. And at, over the page at 617, you have got the term child in need being defined. Paragraph, sorry, section 1710 of the Act. 1710c, he is disabled, is what we were talking about earlier, my lord, about whether BC qualifies as a child in need. But a former relevant child is mentioned in paragraph 12.
Yes, should I just flag up, Miss Rowlands, that at some point, I think it will be helpful if you went through these statutory provisions carefully.
I will do.
In order to, so we can track through how it is or may be that BC comes within them. But you'll not do that at the moment, I don't want to distract you. But I just think we will need to do that with an eye to the facts of this case.
I will do.
At some point, yeah.
At paragraph 40, on page 618, the court then turns to the 1996 Housing Act and the homelessness regime and the definition of homelessness in section 175. And the key point is that the claimant's case is that requiring accommodation and homelessness within the meaning of the 1996 Act were synonymous. And the court here found that although there is a lot of overlap, they're not exactly the same. So in paragraph 18, the claimant's case is summarized. In the period between the expiry of the notice to quit and her 18th birthday, she required accommodation and accordingly should have been provided with accommodation by the council and would then have become a looked after child and been a former relevant child turning 18. Although the council did not in fact provide her with accommodation in that period, she says the council should have exercised its discretion in her case to make good that failure by treating her as a former relevant child as per P E E Treer. Over the page, paragraph 19A, she contends that the phrase requires accommodation must as a matter of law be construed in the same way as the definition of homelessness in section 175. From the expiry of the notice to quit, she had no legal right to occupy her mother's flat, although her occupation of it was being tolerated by the landlord. It is common ground that she was technically homeless during that period and it necessarily follows, she said, that she required accommodation. At paragraph 21, at the bottom of that page, in considering whether the judge's conclusion was correct, it is necessary to start with the fact that section 20 and section 175 are provisions of different statutes which have different subject matters, respectively, the welfare of children and as regards part seven, homelessness and unrelated legislative histories, although there is no doubt an overlap between their potential fields of operation. In the case of children, there is no indication that the provisions are intended to form part of a single statutory scheme. It is important to appreciate, go on at paragraph 22, that the provisions specifying the circumstances in which the section 20 and section 193 duties arise not only use different terminology, but are wholly differently framed. Section 193 of the Housing Act 1996 is what's known as the main or the full housing duty, the duty to assist someone who is homeless to find accommodation. The duty under section 20 is triggered when it appears to the local authority that the child in question requires accommodation. That is the language of an evaluative judgment, a phrase used by Lady Hale at paragraph 19 of her opinion in the Southwark case discussed below. To similar effect, the statute contains no definition of the phrase requires accommodation. Decision makers are evidently intended simply to apply it in accordance with what they understand to be its natural meaning, subject to the important point that before taking a decision, they are required by subsection six to ascertain and pay due regard to the child's wishes. By contrast, the definition of homeless in section 175 depends primarily on the application of a precise formulation of whether the applicant has a legal right to occupy accommodation which is available to them, although there are some elements of evaluation within that test. On the face of it, those considerations strongly suggest that the question whether a child requires accommodation for the purpose of section 20 is to be answered as a matter of factual evaluation, applying that phrase in its natural and common sense meaning and without reference to the definition of homelessness in section 175. We then note at the bottom of that page, paragraph 26, the principal authority relied upon the House of Lords decision in G and Southwark where a child had been sofa surfing at a friend's house. And on the face of it, he obviously required accommodation and so was owed section 20 duty. And the local authority said that they could exercise the general power to provide services under section 17 by referring him to the local housing authority, which would be obliged to accommodate him under part seven, an argument which was rejected. And Lady Hale said that it was the plain intention of Parliament that where a child of 16 or 17 required accommodation, it should be provided under section 20 with the consequence that the child would become a looked after child and attract the full range of support that comes with that status. And she referred back to Alunder Berg on a second pull-up. And at paragraph 28, this court notes that the decision and the reasoning in the Southwark case do not actually support the claimant's case. They illustrate the fact that in many and perhaps most cases, both the section 20 duty and the section 193 duty are potentially owed to children. But it does not say or assume that that will always be so. Lady Hale's decision that the section 20 duty has primacy means that in those cases where it arises, it cannot be evaded by reference to the general duty in section 17 of the Act or to the section 193 duty under the Housing Act. But that has no bearing on the prior question, which is the question in this appeal and in this appeal of whether the child required accommodation in the first place and more particularly whether that question has to be decided by reference to the definition of homelessness in the 1996 Act. No such issue arose on the facts of the Southwark case. And then we have paragraphs 32, 34 and 36, over the page at 624 to 625, reference to the guidance which you have at the end of the bundle. There will be circumstances in which a child of 16 or 17 will be homeless but not owed the section 20 duty.
So where are you reading for precedent?
Paragraph 32.
Thank you.
And at 34, where while the case law and the guidance could be said to demonstrate that the regime should march hand in hand in the case of children, that is only in the sense that in a given case, either duty might in principle be engaged and the relevant authorities will need to cooperate to identify which applies. They certainly do not demonstrate that the circumstances giving rise to the two duties are identical. In fact, they appear clearly to recognize that they are not. And at paragraph 36, I readily accept that in many cases where a child is homeless within the meaning of section 175, they will also require accommodation within the meaning of section 20. In fact, as already noted, I would expect them to be so in the great majority of cases. And like the judge, I do not accept that it will always and necessarily be so. G and Southwark. And Lady Hale's judgment in that is to be found at tab 17 of the bundle at page 333 of the electronic. Lady Hale's exposition of section 20 may be a good place to start by at paragraph three onwards, page 335.
So what are we looking at this case for? And you've seen how it was dealt with by the vice president in DF. What are we looking at this for? For the purposes of this appeal, I mean.
Well, it's more my lady friend's case from it that I want to sort of meet before she gets to it. But it is the basis of the contention that... Well, you've seen how it's dealt with in the case, the Essex case that we've just been looking at.
Yes.
And, well, perhaps maybe I...
And you say, you say that's opposite to this case?
Yes, I do. Perhaps if I dive off then and go to the facts in relation to this case to put that into the context of the Essex case and the way that the judge dealt with it. Yes, putting aside the authorities for the moment, I will go into the facts and start off with the fact that BC was born on Christmas Day 2001.
Miss Rowlands, forgive me, I do think it would be helpful to see that we have the framework of the relevant provisions of the Children Act in mind. They're not straightforward. And for my part, it would be helpful, I know it will be tedious, just to track through... the relevant parts of part three of the Act.
Okay.
I have covered this ground fairly recently in T W. I find it difficult to keep it all in mind, in fact, impossible to keep it all in mind. And it may well be that others in the same boat.
There are a plethora of litigation parts as well that perhaps we don't need to worry about today, but let's start with section seventeen on page three of the bundle of authorities. Section seventeen provides the general duty on every local authority to safeguard and promote the welfare of children within their area who are in need. And so far as is consistent with that duty to promote the upbringing of such children by their families by providing a range and level of services appropriate to those children's Any service subsection three, provided by an authority and the exercise of functions conferred on them by this section may be provided for the family of a particular child in need or any member of this family if it is provided with a view to safeguarding or promoting the child's welfare. Paragraph, subsection seventeen four A, for determining what of any services to provide for a particular child in need and the exercise of functions conferred on them by this section. A local authority's child so far as is reasonably practicable and consistent with the child's welfare ascertain the child's wishes and feelings regarding the provision of those services and give due consideration having regard to his age and understanding to such wishes and feelings of the child as they have been able to facilitate. As a general proposition, the older the child gets, the more weight should be given to their wishes because they are more likely to be adult mature wishes and feelings as you get older. Subsection six services may be include providing accommodation, giving assistance in kind or in cash. And subsection ten gives you the definition of a child in need. A child shall be taken to be in need if he's unlikely to achieve or maintain or to have the opportunity of achieving or maintaining a reasonable standard of health or development without the provision for him of services by a local authority under this part. B, his health or development is likely to be significantly impaired or further impaired without the provision for him of such services or C, he is disabled. Family is also defined then.
And eleven defines development and health.
And again, you've got words substantially and permanently handicapped in there. Over the page, we have section twenty, page five. Section twenty, provision of accommodation for children, every local authority shall provide accommodation for any child in need within their area who appears to them to require accommodation as a result of A, there being no person who has parental responsibility for him, B, his being lost or having been abandoned, or C, the person who's been caring for him being prevented, whether or not permanently and for whatever reason, from providing him with suitable accommodation or care. Section twenty includes some bits which are black and white issues and some bits which are evaluative judgments, more evaluative I think than black and white. One of the black and white issues, I mentioned age assessments earlier, is whether a child is a child, that is a question of fact. Whether the child is within your area is fairly much black and white because they're either there or they're not, although they could be passing through, in which case it gets a little less clear cut. However, evaluative judgment appears to them to require, it is in the judgment of the local authority whether or not he appears to them to require accommodation. And it has to be requiring accommodation as a result of one of the three factors. It is not B C's case that there was no person in a parental responsibility for him, both his parents were clearly on the scene, and it was not his case that he was lost or abandoned. So the question was whether it appeared to the local authority that he required to, appeared to require accommodation as a result of the person who has been caring for him being prevented from providing him with suitable accommodation or care. So again, we've got evaluative judgments as to whether they're prevented, whether they are providing him with suitable accommodation or suitable care.
So it's helpful going through this as you're doing to mark up those parts, those provisions we're going to have to come back to, to look at whether they apply on the facts of this case. Just taking you back to seventeen ten, where would you just flag up for us where we're going to have to come back to in seventeen ten to determine whether it applies?
As I say, there's an argument that he was disabled, but that's contentious, that you would have to then ask whether he came within A or B, health or development likely to be significantly impaired, unlikely to achieve or maintain reasonable standard of health or development.
And is that another evaluation that has to be done by the local authority? Or is it something that can be considered objectively?
That is an evaluation by the local authority.
So A and B would be an evaluation, but C, it would be adopting your earlier distinction, a matter of fact, was it? If he was, is disabled, that's not a matter of evaluation, is it?
No, I don't think, I don't think that would be.
I mean, that's defined in eleven again. What? Yeah, okay. So we'll have to come back to, we'll come back to that on the facts as we need to. Sorry, I took you away from the statutory provisions unhelpfully.
In G and Southwark, Baroness Hale cites the series of judgments set out by Lord Justice Ward in A and Croydon Borough Council at Court of Appeal level. So you see that at paragraph twenty-eight on page three hundred and forty-two.
So we're leaving the statute now, are we? And we're going into case law?
We are in order to illuminate the statute. And to answer what is an evaluative judgment and what is-
The difference between the two.
So A and Croydon, you also have Lord Justice Ward's judgment in its raw form at tab thirteen, page two hundred and sixty-two of the bundle.
Which you're taking us to, Lord Justice Ward or Lady Hale?
Here you have Baroness Hale at page three hundred and forty-two, providing a work to example.
Three hundred and forty-two.
Three hundred and forty-two is within G and Southwark.
Yeah.
So she takes the list and applies it to this case. Is the applicant a child? That was the issue in the Croydon case, that is to say, the age assessment case where the court found that the age of a child is a matter of hard fact. Is the applicant a child in need? This will often require careful assessment. In this case, it is common ground that A is a child in need essentially because he is homeless. It is perhaps possible to envisage circumstances in which a sixteen or seventeen-year-old who is temporarily without accommodation is nevertheless not in need within the meaning of section seventeen ten. But it cannot seriously be suggested further down that a child excluded from home who is sofa-surfing in this way, more often sleeping in cars, snatching showers and washing his clothes when he can, is not in need. Three, is he within the local authority's area? This is not contentious. Four, does he appear to the local authority to require accommodation? In this case, it's quite obvious that a sofa-surfing child requires accommodation, but there may be cases where a child does have a home to go to, whether on his own or with family and friends, that needs help in getting there or getting into it or in having it made habitable or safe. This is the line between needing help with accommodation and needing accommodation. And then five, is that need the result of A, B or C? C has to be given a wide construction if children are, that is to say, a person being prevented from providing him a suitable accommodation or care, has to be given a wide construction if children are not certain of the shortcomings of their parents or carers. It is not disputed that this covers a child who's been excluded from home, even though this is the deliberate decision of the parent. However, it is possible to envisage circumstances in which a child requires accommodation for reasons which do not fall within A, B or C above. For example, he may live independently for some time with a job and somewhere to live and without anyone caring for him at all, he may then lose his accommodation and become homeless. Such a child would not fall within section twenty-one and would therefore fall within the section, within the two thousand and two order priority need and under the Housing Act nineteen ninety-six. What are the child's wishes and feelings? Is number six on the checklist and then over the page, number seven on the checklist is what consideration is to be given to those wishes and feelings. Children are often not good judges of what's in their best interests. And eight and nine do not apply because they had got to the stage of being sixteen and agreed to be provided with accommodation under section twenty. Eight is, does any person with parental responsibility who is willing to provide accommodation for him object to the local authority's intervention? And if there is objection, does the person in whose favourable residence order is enforced agree to the child being looked after by the local authority? So that's how the scheme of section twenty works. It's a series of evaluative judgments within a frame of hard facts. Is this a child? Is it in the local authority's area? And once section twenty arises, once section twenty duty arises and the children's authority have provided accommodation for the child, this is paragraph nine within G and Southwark on page three, three, seven. The local authority cannot sidestep the issue by claiming to have acted under some other power. And in particular, she says here, they cannot be allowing to have been acting under the general duty in section seventeen, but as we have seen from D W N Essex, it is not the case that, DF in Essex, that it is not the case that if a child of, say, seventeen does not require accommodation, even if they are homeless under the nineteen ninety-six Act, that is not sidestepping the provisions of section twenty because there are cases where a child of seventeen may be homeless but not require accommodation. So section seventeen provides the general duty, section twenty provides the specific duty to provide accommodation to individual children. So any child in need within their area who appears to them, evaluative judgment, to require accommodation as a result of one of these matters. It is a social work judgment as to whether a child is in need, whether the child requires accommodation, whether somebody else is prevented from looking after them. And the decision as to the extent of the services to be provided is also a decision in the discretion of the local authority. And authority for that one is A and Croydon.
Are we still on section twenty, subsection one, or we've moved on in the statute?
We're still on the performance of section twenty-one.
Croydon.
Three, four, eight is A and Croydon.
Sorry, give me the page again.
Three hundred and forty-eight.
Just so you know, that's the cusp of the bundles. So Southwark's the last one in the first one, for those of us still using paper and steam-powered machinery. Croydon is-
And the two of us who are don't have tabs.
Go very slowly.
Don't have tabs all the way.
Well-
Thank you, my lady.
Paragraph twenty-six is where I want to go and that's on page three hundred and fifty-eight.
Twenty-six?
Yes. And again, it is Lady Hale telling us that the nineteen eighty-nine Act draws a clear and sensible distinction between different kinds of question. The question whether a child is in need requires a number of different value judgments. What would be a reasonable standard of health or development for this particular child? And that relates back, of course, to section seventeen, ten, because that is where the question of reasonable standard of development comes in seventeen, ten, A. So reasonable standard of health or development might change from child to child because some children might not ever become fully healthy and fully well-developed, given their starting points and issues that trouble them. How likely is he to achieve it? What services might bring that standard up to a reasonable level? What amounts to a significant impairment of health? It is seventeen, ten, B. Questions like this are sometimes decided by the courts in the course of care of other proceedings under the Act. Courts are quite used to deciding them upon the evidence, the purpose of deciding what order, if any, to make. But where the issue is not what order should the court make, but what service should the local authority provide, it is entirely reasonable to assume that Parliament intended such evaluative questions to be determined by the public authority, subject to the control of the court and the ordinary principles of judicial review. Within the limits of fair process and wensbury reasonableness, there are no clear-cut right The outcome of a decision under section twenty might be that a child becomes an eligible child, a relevant child or a form of relevant child, depending on their age. An eligible child is a child of sixteen or seventeen who has been looked after for thirteen weeks between the ages of fourteen and sixteen and remains looked after. A relevant child is a child under eighteen, no longer looks-
Just a moment, just a moment. Where are you reading from now?
I'm reading actually from my skeleton argument.
Yes. We just, I was just reminding myself in parentheses that Lady Hale in Southwark had approved the list of Lord Justice Ward in Croydon.
Yes.
But then a few months later, when the court, the House of Lords, heard the appeal from the Croydon case, it reversed the decision. I've just tried to get my head around that.
Yes, but I do not think that they interfered with Lord Justice Ward's checklist.
Okay. There wasn't anything in, you didn't take us to anything in the Croydon decision of the House of Lords on that point.
It was pretty much purely on whether or not age is a fact. Age is a fact.
Oh, yes, fact.
It was an age assessment case, an unaccompanied asylum-seeking children claiming, well, young person claiming to be a child, possibly not being a child, whether that is a matter of assessment for the local authority or whether it's a hard-edged fact. And they caught-
So you're just relying on that passage in paragraph twenty-six, really, in the judgment of Lady Hale?
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six of Croydon?
Yes.
Twenty-six. Thank you very much. Sorry. Now we're going back to the statute now.
I was going to run very quickly through the categories of young people which are set out at paragraph twenty-seven onwards of my skeleton argument. They summarise the effect of the Children Living Care Act and the Care Planning, Placement and Case Review Regulations, which I don't think you need to- Placement and Case Review Regulations, which I don't think you need to look at in any other depth, just to know that you get the various categories.
So you, you gave us three categories, eligible, is that right?
Yeah, relevant.
Relevant child or former relevant child. And, and just give us the...
Then there's qualifying as well, isn't there?
So, uh, yes, uh, under 21 and has spent at least one day in care after the age assessment.
Okay, so you, you gently pushed back on my suggestion we should look at the statutory provisions, and say we can just take the summary in your skeleton?
Yes.
Right?
Which, sorry, paragraph in your skeleton is?
Uh, 27 through to 35. I actually think I might have stolen those paragraphs from Miss Liu in the first place in another case that we did together.
That's very generous of you to, oh, is that? I noticed Lord Justice Lewis had given permission to approve of cutting and pasting.
I know, I know, um.
The trouble is, if it's right, it's right. I always think that, uh, I mean, clearly people should cut and chase large chunks. But if something says it perfectly, I always think, well, I can't do better than that, so I'll cut and paste it. Um, so this is eligible, relevant and former relevant.
And qualifying.
Qualifying comes, um, paragraph 32 in my skeleton. And the qualifying child is entitled some of the same duties, keeping in touch, advice and support, and there are some discretionary powers to provide financial support if required. That's the outcome of these, um, decisions that Surrey were taking at the time.
You accept, so that's, you accept that, that is your summary?
I accept.
Yeah, that, that's your summary. I mean, we don't have the statutory provisions which, which back that up, but that is your... That's agreed between you, is it those definitions of people? Eligible, relevant, former relevant and qualifying?
Yes, my lord.
Okay, so we can...
Those are the three plus the qualifying child are the four categories.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight to thirty-two is...
Twenty-seven to thirty-two. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The underlying statutory provisions are in your bundle.
I know.
This is the Children Act 1989, as amended by the Children Leaving Care Act 2000 and supplemented by the Care Planning, Placement and Case Review England Regulations 2010.
Yeah.
So it's really up to my lord whether he wants to be a masochist.
I'll have to look that for myself, won't I? Never mind, or I'll find someone to do it for me.
But anyway, paragraphs...
You're, you're agreed that those definitions are enough, are you?
Well, I certainly think so. Um, I don't think Miss Liu disagrees.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Um, the Ministry of Housing and Communities and Local Government and the Department for Education have promulgated joint guidance, which we heard about as we were looking at, um, the DF and Essex case. It's also cited in the TW and Essex case.
It is.
So what I will do first is look at the guidance, which is at the end of the bundle, page 657. It is joint guidance, and it really emerges from the, um, overlap between these two particular scenarios. We could have a, a young person who requires accommodation, we could have a young person who's homeless. And case law, it says at paragraph 1.2, has clarified the relationship between the duty under section 20 of the Children Act and the duties under part 7 of the Housing Act 1996. G and Southwark held that where a 16 or 17-year-old is owed duties under section 20 of the Act, that takes precedence over those, the duties in providing for children in need to require accommodation. And where the specific duty is owed under section 20, a child of 16 or 17 should be accommodated under that provision, rather than looking to the general duty owed to children in need and their families under section 17 of the Act. But a 16 or 17-year-old child can apply for homeless assistance. Paragraph 1.3, housing services also have duties towards young people who are homeless or threatened with homelessness. Duties owed by each service will depend on a range of factors, including which service they initially seek help from, the outcomes of any assessments and inquiries, and the wishes and feelings of the young person and their family.
What, what's this doing beyond paraphrasing the statute?
It's giving me a way in to say this. When somebody approaches a local authority saying they need accommodation, one of the things that the local authority can do is perform the duties under the Housing Act 1996 by providing advice and assistance to someone who is homeless. They don't need to allocate accommodation to them, they can help them to provide accommodation elsewhere. And duties owed by each service will depend on the range of factors. That is the key point here. Not every young person of 17 has the same needs, the same factors. Uh, and the fact that they approach one service or the other may be indicative of their wishes and feelings and what they really want as an outcome from the approach that they are making to the local authority.
I anticipate that we're going to go on quite quickly to chapter three of the guidance, are you?
Um, I was going to look at 2.5 before we got there. By the age of 16 or 17, many young people are forming relationships. A few may themselves be pregnant or have children. Assessment, support and accommodation services should take into account young people's relationships as well as any dependent children. And then, yes, paragraph 3.1 and 3.2 on page 662. And the question about, um, if the young person is at risk of becoming homeless in the future, for example, because of conflict in the family home, it will be for children's services to determine what support is required, depending on the circumstances and the needs of the young person and their family. Where there's no immediate threat of homelessness, intervention may be more appropriately led by early health services. Whereas if there's an imminent threat of homelessness or if the young person is actually homeless, a child in need assessment must be carried out and the child accommodated under section 20. And paragraph 3.4, where it appears that they have nowhere safe to stay that night, children's services must secure suitable accommodation for them under section 20. Um, and if they are accommodated then for 24 hours plus, they will become looked after. You then have two circumstances. At paragraph 313, in which a local authority might find that a homeless young person should not be accommodated under section 20 and may instead be owed duties under the Housing Act 1996, where the young person is not a child in need or is a child in need, who having been properly and fully advised of the implications and having passed it to each decision, has decided that they do not want to be accommodated under section 20. Uh, this chapter goes on to talk about assessments, young person's wishes and feelings, and the, um, various minority issues about being in custody and crossover. And the duty to refer to housing services at the end. Um, local authority children's services are one of the public authorities who have a duty under the Homelessness Reduction Act to notify a local housing authority where there is a risk of homelessness or, um, somebody is likely to become homeless within 56 days. Uh, and before making a referral, the public authority must have consent from the individual. That also applies to 16 and 17-year-olds. And I think that's it out of that chapter.
Could, could we just have a look at paragraph, um, 316?
Determining who is in need and the extents of any needs requires professional judgment by social workers. As Lady Hale said, the evaluative judgment as to whether they are in need and as to what services should be provided. Informed by consultation, however, where a young person is excluded from home and is, for example, staying with various friends or sleeping in a car, it is extremely likely that they will be a child in need. And where a young person at 319 seeks help because they're homeless, because they are homelessness or threatened with homelessness, it is good practice for an assessment to be conducted jointly. But the lead agency will be children's services.
Does the last sentence of paragraph 316 have any relevance to this case?
Um, yes, certainly my learned friend will rely upon it and has relied upon it, I think, quite heavily. It is, generally speaking, you don't want to see a child under 18 street homeless or not having, uh, accommodation so that they require accommodation under section 20. But that doesn't mean to say that BC was either homeless or required accommodation in the circumstances of this case. So I say that the evaluative judgment made by Surrey in this case was that he didn't require accommodation, and I'll make good that by reference to the papers shortly.
Is it the same question whether he was homeless and whether he required accommodation? Because I think your case is, isn't it, is that, um, BC was not excluded from home?
Yeah.
It may be that he was staying with friends, but he had two options at home, either to go and live with his mum on terms or the caravan on terms. And there's lots of evidence about that, I'm not making any assumptions. But so you say he wasn't homeless. Does it therefore follow that he's not a child in need? I mean, is that the same process?
I can't see any basis for saying that he's a child in need in those circumstances. And...
Is it, your, your case is that he was not a child? The local authorities assessed, evaluation was that he was not a child in need? And it was a matter for the local authority?
I also say that he wasn't homeless. Could have been threatened with homelessness. However, the judge, in my submission, thought that the fact that he'd applied as homeless to any need meant that the section 22 duty coalesced at that moment, and that was an error of law.
This may be dancing on a pinhead, and you may say to me that it's, it's getting too bogged down. But I've got the point that it's an evaluation for the local authority whether a child is in need or not, and that's a multifactorial assessment, evaluation based on all the evidence and so on. Is the decision whether a person is homeless also evaluative? Or is that more hard-edged? Because either you've got, um, either you've been excluded from home and for that reason you're staying with friends or sleeping in a car, or you haven't been excluded from home. In other words, is the decision that you have or have not been excluded from home evaluative or factual?
Um, I think you've asked me two different questions there.
Okay.
And the first one is whether or not you're homeless under section 175 of the Housing Act 1996. Is that hard-edged or evaluative? And the answer to that is that it's mainly hard-edged, but there is an evaluative element to it because accommodation must be reasonable for you to continue to occupy, and that is an evaluation. For example, I was doing a case last week where the appellant said, I am homeless because although I have a roof over my head, I have two bedrooms, I have two children, one of them has autism, and so I need three bedrooms. And so it is not reasonable for me to continue to occupy this two-bedroom property. So although she's not street homeless, she says that she is homeless. And that, it is evaluative for the local authority. If somebody comes along and says, my landlord has got a possession order against me, the court says I've got to leave tomorrow, you're clearly homeless at that point. So that one's just a hard-edged decision.
That's just a fact, that's a fact. So it could be different, it could be different things depending on context.
Could be, it could be. Very often when people apply as homeless, they're just homeless. And that's, that's the long and the short of it. It's very rare that there's an appeal on whether you're homeless or not. It's usually a question of whether you're intentionally homeless or in priority need or whatever. So, um, the other question as to whether or not he, he was able to go home, uh, whether he required accommodation under section 20, that, in my submission, is one of those evaluative, uh, things for the local authority children's services to look at. Because it's all a question, it's a much more almost a fuzzy question about whether the parents have been prevented from providing accommodation and care for him. And prevented can mean prevented by a complete breakdown in relationship. So I've cited S and Sutton in my skeleton argument. At paragraph 61, I've cited S and Sutton and the dictator of Mr. Justice Stanley Burton. I should mention that S and Sutton was overturned on appeal, but again, not on this point. And he says their prevention, that is to say, being prevented from providing accommodation, undoubtedly involves an objective test. It is not satisfied if the factor only that that child does not want to live with someone who's willing to provide suitable accommodation. But circumstances do arise where people are so incompatible that they cannot live together. So, um, looking at all the facts, you can have, um, in this case, the relationship between BC and his mother was clearly strained, and she described him as a complete twat. So circumstances can arise where people are such a twat that they can no longer be expected to live with their parent. Um...
Moving away from the language of the guidance at that point.
Just a little. Um, it's, it's, it's such a nice opportunity to swear at judges, I cannot forego it. Um, so, um, he was...
I'm sure we've all experienced much worse.
Yes, and we're not allowed to swear back, so you're, you're, uh...
Oh, I hope you're not going to feel the need to call me anything like that, either in court or in your judgment. Um, prevention is an objective test, an evaluative one for the local authority. Objectively speaking, have the parents been prevented from providing accommodation for the child, either by, uh, force of events, like they've been evicted, or by the force of a relationship breaking down? So that is an evaluative part of whether, um, BC was, um, in need of accommodation, whether he required accommodation because his parents had been prevented from providing it for him.
But that was one, you say, for the, for Surrey to make and to be tested by reference to ordinary Weddinsbury principles.
And also, the point that I want to make on this one is that it's, um, looking at it on a, an ongoing basis rather than on a day-by-day basis. It's not for Surrey to go and say to him, where are you sleeping tonight? Where are you sleeping tonight? Where are you sleeping tomorrow night? It's a question of, does he have accommodation? Uh, or does he require accommodation? So, um, I think there's a very marked difference in approach between myself and Miss Liu on this, where she will give you detailed submissions on what was happening on a day-by-day basis. Whereas I adjure you to look at it on a holistic and ongoing basis and looking at a more broad brush approach to whether, um, BC was a child in need who required accommodation. So if I were to answer the questions cited by Lord Justice Ward in Ian Croydon, looking at the, um, seven relevant questions out of that list. The first one is, was he a child? Yes, only just, but he was a child, he was under 18. Was he a child in need? And the answer to that one is, in Surrey's view, no. Was he within the local authority's area, yes. Does he appear to the...
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
He was not a child in need because...
Didn't meet any of the criteria within 17, 10, ABC?
Yep.
There was no suggestion, particularly...
Unless he was disabled, which we don't know the answer to.
There's no evidence that he was disabled, I would say.
But if you, assuming that's, but the gate's closed, you'd say because his parents were not prevented from looking after him.
And also, looking back at 1710 and looking at the age he was at, when we're talking about development and welfare, we're talking about a very short period of time over which he would be developing in any event. So we're looking at someone who was nearly an adult and has no obvious medical needs, no, he's not in a wheelchair or anything like that.
So the so-called development criteria would not be satisfied by a child who was almost, a young person who was almost 18?
In the circumstances of this case, I'm not going to say anything about, generally speaking, I do say that B C in this case was not a child in need. Yes, he's in the local authority's area, that one's an easy one. And then four, does he appear to the local authority to require accommodation? At the dating question, and I'll come back to the papers to make good this point in more depth, he didn't require accommodation.
Dating question being?
20th of September. His mother, they had interviewed the mother, she was acting as a good parent, she had told him he could come back as long as he stopped drinking drugs and so on and so forth. Not an unreasonable stance, you might say. She had also said that he could live in caravan. Now, I think that Mr Justice Carver was quite horrified by the idea of a child living in a caravan. But the point is that this is a culturally appropriate accommodation for him because he comes from a traveller background, he'd grown up in a caravan, the caravan was available for him. He had option three, which is the one that he was happiest with, that he could stay with his friend Kay and Kay's mother. That was the status quo ante before Surrey came onto the picture at this point. And it was also what happened throughout. Doesn't mean that he was required to have perfect accommodation, but he was not in need of accommodation because he had various options open to him.
Where was he sleeping at Kay's house?
Yes, he was sleeping there.
Where?
Where?
In a bed or a sofa?
I actually don't know the answer to that, but he said he was happy there, he said he was comfortable there. And sofa surfing and sleeping on a sofa, my lord, I think you're going back to the question about sofa surfing. Sofa surfing means sleeping somewhere different every day. You could sleep on a sofa or the sofa bed and still not be homeless or require accommodation.
Are you going to say anything about paragraph 3.16 of the guidance at this point? Which said, you all remember, that young people who are...
Excluded from home.
Home, which you say he wasn't. And will normally...
Will normally be a child in need.
Be in need if they are staying with friends.
Staying with friends.
Various.
Various friends. So that's the sofa surfing aspect of it.
Okay.
It's not having a settled place.
Not various friends.
So he had somewhere where he could say, "This is where I'm staying at the moment, this is where I'm accommodated at the moment."
Right, thank you.
And then question five on Lord Justice Ward's list is, is that need for accommodation, which I've said doesn't actually apply here, the result of there being no person who has parental responsibility etc., or the person who's been caring for him being prevented? Now, in this case, his parents were not prevented from providing him with suitable accommodation. They could offer him a caravan, they could provide him with their own accommodation and they could provide him with financial support so he could pay his way with Kay's mother as he said he wanted. All they wanted was that B C should accept proper boundaries, that they were part of his care, they attended team around the family meetings, they made decisions together with the local authority. Number six is the child's wishes regarding the provision of accommodation for him. And at this point, he was saying he wanted to live with Kay and his mother, he was happy there, felt comfortable there, said he didn't want to live in the caravan. What consideration, having regard to his age and understanding, is duly to be given to those wishes? Huge amount is my answer to that one because of his emerging adulthood. And nobody with parental responsibility objected to the local authority's intervention because the local authority weren't proposing to provide accommodation for him. They agreed, as did B C, to the targeted youth support being provided. He had assistance with the issues that he had, which were drugs and need for employment. Those are this kind of low-level intervention that is talked about in the guidance. It mentions, I think at paragraph... Oh, I'm sorry, I've lost it now. The early youth support is mentioned. Give me, I'll come back on that one. But it's early youth support he previously had that avoided things getting worse. And again, this would be the appropriate level of intervention because at nearly 18, emerging into adulthood, applying for accommodation through the local authority, running aid in his own right, he was someone who wanted to live independently and he was someone who was able to live independently and did not need to be treated as a child in need and was not a child in need. It is my submission that that is well made out on the face of the papers. At page 34 of the supplementary bundle.
Thirty-four?
Give me, I'm just turning it up. Yes. Page 34, you see the notes, these are made on the 18th of September 2019, which summarise the history. And you will recall that B C was born 2001. Between 2003 and 2011, there were three contacts with Children's Services in connection with his older brother and older sister. No action felt necessary. There's record when Burton was eight, sorry, B C was eight, he suffered with a brain tumour. Contact received from education, special education needs information for him in 2011. In 2013, contact received from housing, family at risk of eviction. And 2015, mother contacted police to report bullying. So very little intervention required at those stages. 2017, police report relate to B C being involved in child sexual exploitation and underage drinking. It was agreed that the threshold was met for section 47, child protection inquiries, to include a child and family assessment. But that did not lead to the children of the family, even though the older sister was also considered a victim. It did not involve the family being considered as children in need. 2017, another police report where B C said that he had taken cocaine, mother said she would keep an eye on him. 2017, found in possession of a knife, throwing bottles in the road and stopped and searched in 2017 by the police again. So there is that history there of troubles, but not to the extent where the local authority needed to step in and become corporate parent for B C. Over the year, there was various support given and you also have the witness statement of Elaine Andrews at supplementary bundle, page 172, paragraph four, that summarises this as well.
Could you give me that reference again, please?
172, paragraph four.
Open this up.
At paragraph 31 of his judgement, on page 138 of the core bundle.
Paragraph which?
Thirty-one.
Yeah.
Five lines into that, you see it starts, "B C was well-known to SCC with this history of Children's Services involvement. And SCC had already made considerable inquiries about his needs and welfare. His being prevented from residing at home was the culmination of the known progressive deterioration in his relationship with his parents. It was clearly the case, as Mr Justice Alba, that in accordance with paragraph 3.4 of the guidance, suitable emergency accommodation for B C under section 20 was required whilst his full needs, including his need for continuing accommodation and support, were further assessed." So nothing in the records support that contention that there was a known progressive deterioration in the relationship with his parents and that it was clearly the case that emergency accommodation was required because he had nowhere to go at night.
Remember which paragraph we were just reading from in the judge's judgement?
Thirty-one.
Thank you.
On page 14.
My lord, I don't want to interrupt my learned friend, but if you can read paragraph 31, then could I ask you to read in context the paragraphs leading up to that? My learned friend had taken you to records in 2017 and 2018, but the court did refer to further records in 2019 prior to the incident in September 2019. So I just want to make sure that whilst you're on this page.
Yeah, I mean, the judge's factual summary starts at 20.
Yes.
And, I mean, I have assumed that most, if not all, of the material comes from records of some sort.
That's quite right. It was just that the submission is nothing between 2018 and that and that's not correct in the judgement itself.
Yep.
My submission is that that paragraph overstates the case, to say the least. My submission as well is, and one of the grounds of appeal is that the learned judge gave too much weight to the contents of B C's witness statement and not looking at the contemporaneous records. And this is one example of that. While I'm on that point and while we're in this...
Sorry, I understand that ground of appeal, too much emphasis on the claimant's statements and not looking at...
Miss Andrews' statement.
Miss?
Andrews.
Andrews.
My lord, I believe that ground, that ground was the partial not grant by Lord Justice Lewis in relation to ground 10. So I just wanted to clarify that because that was one of the complaints that Lord Justice Lewis didn't grant permission on. And I just want to understand how my learned friend is now using that.
Which ground, you say this point arises under?
Ground ten.
The ones for which you have permission, I mean?
And which I haven't dealt with as a separate ground, freestanding ground. I've sort of woven it into the other grounds because it's...
Well, you can't weave in things for which, as a freestanding ground, you weren't given permission.
The grant of permission is at... Page 84. And Lord Justice Lewis said, sorry, 84 of the core bundle, judge was entitled to refer to B C's evidence.
Sorry, sorry. Which ground?
Ground 10.
So Lord Justice Lewis, it's a slightly curious conclusion. He says there was no unfairness in not referring to Miss Andrews' evidence, but there was an arguable unfairness in over referring to B C's evidence.
Yes.
But that was on the basis, as I understand it, that Miss Andrews' evidence was really based on a trawl through the records. So therefore, I thought the point that Lord Justice Lewis was making was, well, there was nothing standalone about Miss Andrews' evidence, so it can't have been unfair not to have regard to her evidence. He's clearly had regard to the records because a lot of it's based on the records, which Miss Andrews refers to.
And what we should be looking at are contemporaneous records, first and foremost.
Yes.
My submission is that the judge went too far in looking at B C's rewriting of history.
Do we need to look at ground 10 itself, just to make sure, for my part, I do understand what Lord Justice Lewis was not giving permission. Is it at page 100, ground 10?
It is.
So the last sentence isn't open to you on his, the last sentence of your ground 10 is not open to you on the basis of the permission?
I don't read that as saying that I can't ask you to look at Miss Andrews' witness statement.
Sorry, say again?
I don't read that as saying that I cannot ask your lordships to look at Miss Andrews' witness statement.
No, of course you can, you can. But to the extent that you were supporting this ground by suggesting that the judge didn't have enough regard to Miss Andrews' statement, I think Lord Justice Lewis' PTA suggests that that point's not open to you. But I don't think, I think we're angels on the head of a pin since these are all records anyway.
Can I just...
I know it's the administrative court, but I'd be really keen to get on with the real issues.
Can I just finish off with that point on paragraph 35 in the judge's judgement on page 139?
Thirty-five?
Yes.
Yep.
So the judge says he had no plan and he was confused, having been kicked out of his parents' home. In fact, when you look at the records, and I've got the right note here, it's supplementary bundle, page 34. The reference is, it's about a quarter of the way up that page, "I asked B C what his plans are until he's 18. He said he has no plan and is confused. Told me he wants to go back to college." So it's not actually about accommodation, it's about plans in terms of college and employment. And then he goes, "After being kicked out by his parents, when he stayed with his sister, he couldn't get to college, to his bricklaying course." So it's a historical thing. The judge has taken, kicked out of his parents' home as applying to there and then. And then...
When was that, though? That was...
He'd previously been staying with his sister for a previous period. And then above that, "I asked B C if he's still staying with his friend Kay, he said he is. He told me he did not contact the social but went to housing on Friday." The other thing about this one in paragraph 35, when asked about his grandparents' caravan, B C said that they had been saying that since December and he'd been relying on it, but it never materialised. BC said that they had been saying that since December and he'd been relying on it, but it never materialised. I'll have a look what the records actually say. BC said they'd been saying that since December and he's been relying on it.
Where were you reading from then?
Where it says detailed notes in the left-hand column about a quarter of the way up.
Still page thirty-four of the supplementary bundle. In the lucky yard, I see.
So the judge has, in my submission, taken the wrong things from that entry. And then in paragraph thirty-five, he goes on to say, I accept the uncontradicted evidence contained in the first witness statement of BC, in which he explained that the caravan was dilapidated, it was in baller, and would have to be brought to the family's caravan site and refurbished before it could be habitable. There's no evidence to support the suggestion that that was possible. Now, I don't know why he says it's uncontradicted evidence, because there wasn't any cross-examination, of course, but nowhere in the documents is there any reference to this caravan being dilapidated or anything like that. BC says there, he's relying on it, he wants to go to the caravan. And other references to the caravan say that he is quite positive about going into it. And as I say, it was part of his cultural background and his family background that caravans were suitable accommodation for them. So that's all I want to say really about the ground ten points, other than making further references to the records as and when we go through. But the key point...
Sorry, can you just say, is there anything else we know from these notes about the caravan? He said that he, I mean, is it an absence of any reference to them, or is it, does he say somewhere, I'm really looking forward to going to the caravan? Apart from the bit, I've noted the bit.
He's been relying on it.
On page thirty-four.
Yeah, there is something else.
No reference to it being dilapidated?
There's no reference to it being dilapidated. Page thirty... In the supplementary bundle you have, BC told me...
Thirty?
Yes, three zero. He's currently living at Kay's address and they're happy to have him, he said he likes it there, he's made to feel comfortable. But he's unable to provide him if he wants his support in the home, which is why he would like to work. I told BC I'd spoken with Mum, she seemed quite upset about presenting issues. I explained she had told me he could return home and live in a caravan on site, paying forty pounds per week. BC said he didn't want to return home, as he didn't want to be in a caravan, he's left him one for seven years and they're cold in the winter. That's the, I think, the lowest point of what he says about a caravan.
What's the date of this?
First of October.
And that was all, was that, was that all part of what was in the judge's mind when he referred to, said what he said at paragraph thirty-five?
When he said what he said in thirty-five about the caravan being dilapidated, he was taking that from BC's witness statement. With the benefit of hindsight.
So can I just, one more bit, and this is just dancing around a little bit, but just to finish off the caravan story, there's a bit in the middle of thirty-four, under analysis, just between two whole punches.
Yes.
Which is Mum saying that she'd be willing, it's the third line, to place a caravan or trailer at the side of their current trailer for him to live in. But she's got some conditions. Brandon, sorry, BC said, his parents have said they will do this since December last year, so that's that point coming up again. But it hasn't happened, but he has spent the odd night in the family trailer, but his room was given to somebody else. And the mother of the friend he's currently staying with hasn't told him he has to leave despite telling housing this. Yeah? What was that date? Eighteenth of September.
That's the eighteenth of September, that's Surrey making its initial investigations, having had the referral from Runnymede. And what the judge says about the referral from Runnymede at paragraph thirty-two of the judgment is Runnymede correctly told Surrey that it wouldn't be able to support his application at that stage by reason of the fact he was still a child, being seventeen years old. The word correctly, you know, I do take exception to because as we've looked already, there are circumstances when a seventeen-year-old can apply for homelessness and indeed to go on the allocations scheme. So it is not correct to say that Runnymede could just refer somebody to children's services and say, not my problem, over to you. There has to be more to it than that. Then you have the investigations made, we've looked at some of them in paragraph, page thirty-four is one of them. But we start at page thirty... It's probably best to start off with the...
Could I just ask, I'm sorry to interrupt, are we under a particular ground here? I'm very, very boring, and I like to have notes that have headings, and I quite often like to say ground X or ground Y. Other than grounds one and two, I'm not yet, I don't have any headings, I've put in ground ten, question mark, for some of this recent stuff because we mentioned it as a result of Miss Liu's intervention, but if we're looking at the facts, is this under a heading of a particular ground?
I've grouped three, four, five, seven and eight together as an issue rather than a...
You're throwing all this material at us, not throwing, you're putting all this material before us.
I am.
And then you're going to, after lunch, hone it into submissions on grounds three, four, five. So three, four, five and which?
Seven and eight.
And it's sort of the section twenty ground, is it?
It is.
Whether there was section twenty duty at all.
And this is the finding upon which neither side are happy with the findings of Mr Justice Garver because he found that the section twenty duty arose by the eighteenth of September twenty nineteen, which I say is wrong, and that he wasn't accommodated by the defendant, but he was accommodated as from the seventeenth of October twenty nineteen, which my learned friend says is wrong. And the learned judge, in my submission, was wrong on both of those parts. And so the starting point for it is...
You say he was wrong that the duty arose on the seventeenth, eighteenth of October, September, and also wrong to say that he was accommodated under the duty on the October date. Is that right, Miss Reynolds?
Yes.
So you both say he's wrong to have found that he was accommodated on the seventeenth of October.
In my part of it, he was wrong to say that he was accommodated by Surrey at all. And in Miss Liu's part of it, he was wrong to say that it only started on the seventeenth of October.
Yes. So as far as you're both concerned, the poor old judge got no point on this point.
He might get stars for effort.
All right, so you say wrong because you say he wasn't accommodated at all.
And so, yes, the grounds that I am referring to, we were looking at those grounds a moment ago, page one hundred in the core bundle.
Yes.
The ones that we're actually looking at at the moment are at page ninety-nine. So he erred in finding that the section twenty duty arose immediately upon the claimant presenting himself as homeless to Runnymede. And this is the key ground.
Where are you now reading from?
Page ninety-nine, ground three.
Yeah.
Ground four is that he erred in substituting his own decision as to whether the claimant met the criteria under section twenty. The evaluative judgment of the local authority was substituted by the learned judge with his own appreciation of those facts. That can only be done, as we know from TW in Essex, if he overcomes that high bar.
Key, that's right, key, darling.
Fifth ground, erred in finding that the claimant's parents were prevented from caring for him. Sixth ground, I do not have permission for. Seven, erred in giving no weight to the claimant's wishes as part of the substitution that he did. And concluding that making a homeless application equated to an immediate need for accommodation. And as we've looked at, the fact that you make a homeless application is not the same as requiring accommodation under section twenty. And the next point is about the claimant and his parents not objecting to the fact that he was provided with targeted youth support rather than immediately taken into section twenty accommodation, with all that goes with that. My lords, I have got an eye on the time and I see it's one o'clock now, so would this be a convenient moment to have a break?
If it's a convenient moment for you, yes, that's absolutely fine, thank you very much. Right, we'll come back at two o'clock, please.